Terry Beck.
Terry Beck, yeah. Terry Beck. Yeah. But there's three plus interim which he couldn't come down this week because he had a conflict with his boss. So next week, you know. But if you're gonna have the equipment that you need, coverage that you need, like 24 hour coverage.
Well, I think we really need to push the 24 hour thing because that is what a lot of people want to see.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not pushing it, but you know.
Make sure that's one of the things we will do with it.
So if we go for 24 hour coverage, what's, what's our bottom number of police officers?
Six. Six would be adding one more. So we have basically three right now and then one vacancy and the changing.
So we would have one more officer.
Because in order to do 24 hour coverage, six or seven is your ultimate because you have people going on vacation, sick, you know, that type of thing.
Well, seventy thousand dollars a year would barely cover that salary. You know, it could be a, well, they have something at five dollars.
How long, I didn't see this in here, maybe I just skimmed over it. Does it say how, is this a permanent addition? So from now until somebody buys my office?
Unless how some businesses come in and we have a great gross per and we find that our taxes are going up, you know, because that's where the taxes pretty much pay for general fund employees. That's pretty much where we get it from is the tax side and fees. So and our fees, all fees are too low right now. I mean, but like when Chief Rao was talking the other night, they have stepped up as a police department to do different things that are normally charged out and they don't internally. Oh, oh, sorry.
Sort of like what Stan Jaske did for a while to, you know, keep the machinery running in-house like that. Are you talking sort of like what Stan Jaske did additionally when he started working on some of that?
Yeah, we'll probably look at that again once it's not his position.
But that's what he did. He was, he was hired and he stepped up to do this internal stuff.
Yeah, internals.
It developed a little from there.
And it does save the town a lot of money by having them in house and can, you know, if you can get to the police department or get everything done. But Stan's an exception too because he has all the certifications to work on fire engines where we would have to do in the future. And it's something we need to think about. In the future, we will need to start sending somebody, you know, like Dusty or something that starts training for that or whoever will be that person who Stan leaves. Because they have to have all those certifications to work on fire engines.
I don't guess some, you know, with the five dollars is not really gonna be enough to cover both agencies.
No, no, it probably wouldn't, but.
And, and maybe we, I don't know, and this is putting it off because I think Sandy's right about the 24 hour coverage is a big sell. But maybe we need to invest equipment and training and then look at what we have left for the other officer that we need.
But in order to have 24 hour coverage, we're gonna have to have something, some type of something to.
And we probably wouldn't be able to do it perhaps until we had this in effect for some months. You know, so we have the money to go ahead and hire some.
So let's say that we put it in effect, let's just say to, you know, it would take a good six months to get, you know, that amount. So if we do ten dollars a month, obviously that'd be a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, which is probably.
And like I say, it varies. Paid with salary and some other things.
It would be nice to have the 15, but I don't think we can sell a 15.
Yeah, subsidies are, that's pretty high.
I think that's, that gets pretty spendy for people, you know.
Have we raised the water? We lower the dollar a month, we have.
That's true, we did.
But it's something to consider.
But we have to do something because we have to upgrade that part.
Well, and despite the bullet time. And I keep talking about 24 hour coverage and you cannot use 15 coverage if you have a five.
No.
You could do it like a few nights a week as someone said, you know, maybe on weekends or something, but yeah, not seven days a week. No, and when I, Carrie and I kind of went over some scheduling to look at, what I was looking at is, okay, we know when all the other officers get off, you know, the state police or whether it's the county to get off at a certain time. So I was looking at, okay, we come on an hour before that and we work till, you know, like, let's say we come on 11, work till, you know, morning, you know, something like that, you know, on the eight hour shifts. Now, I know the guys are not liking the eight hour shifts, but we need to have, we need to protect the people that debt.
Why don't they like eight hour shifts? You mean going into the evenings or?
I guess that two days a week is not enough time off.
What do they normally work?
They're working, they're, they're, was working 10 and taking three days off.
Oh, I see, I see. No, I, you know, that's a luxury. I mean, and I understand that totally, trust me. But on the other hand, you can't leave three days with people, you know, without coverage.
And then there was some discussion on 12 hour shifts and I said, as far as I'm concerned, I watched that, wasn't ever.
No, that's, I don't even like 10 for police officers.
That's a liability that.
Well, they have to be sharp and on their toes all the time and.
They actually respond in an emergency is the whole point.
Years ago, they all, they all worked eight hour shifts. And I don't know when they started.
They started that when Travis became chief.
Okay, yeah.
Two years. That's my understanding now.
Kiss that time divide.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but that's what I was told.
And it may be that that's what we have to work until we get to a point where we can say, okay, we've got more people now. We can adjust this to some degree, but we, coverage of the community is primary.
Well, and it's kind of like the charge we did, you know, for the snowplow, we driveway thing. People raved about it at first and then after a while, you just kind of forgot about it and, you know, it's just part of, part of their bill.
My other concern is this, and you know, I, I, I can vote for it, I don't have a problem with it, but what kind of repercussion are we gonna get with trying to get our water? Because people are wanting the water before they want anything else.
You mean using money for?
Using money for places to cleaning up our water.
Yeah, and you know, I know Robert has been putting in for grants and everything, trying to get everything we can to do that. They are working on that one well and we've been watching on it and they were pulling the pipe out.
That was really why I didn't want it.
So I'm sorry I missed most of the discussion so far. It sounds like you guys are pretty proud of it and, you know, as the ordinance reads, you know, at 15, it sounds like you're discussing a five, it must be 10. The background for the whole purpose of this, if I'm kind of hearing, is something must have changed or we just, you know, the services that we were providing are no longer, were no longer able to provide according to, you know, tax revenue we were collecting.
For several years, we haven't been providing nighttime service and I think that's what.
And this is the solution to that?
To add a position, we can't have 24 hour coverage if you don't have at least a minimum of six. It, it's impossible with everything now with vacations, kinds of sick, you know, whatever it is. So how do we make our?
So we're currently funded for five and the proposed numbers of five dollar increase would get us to 70 roughly, roughly a year. To provide the six person we needed.
We, we haven't set the price.
No, you haven't set the price, but what I'm saying is a five.
Five would get us that employee.
Five would get us.
It would get us a new employee, but it wouldn't help with additional training, it wouldn't help with upgrading our equipment.
It wouldn't help the fire department.
Wouldn't help the fire department at all.
Well, not at this point maybe, and maybe we want to focus first on this and then just look at something else later on, but dedicate fully by two years so we can build it up a little bit or a year so we get one more person. Because if people want the coverage, they don't have to pay a little bit. And I don't think five dollars is too much.
So I guess what I'm missing is, are other communities have got this in place? This is what every other community for somehow, just like the motel tax, we failed to include this tax.
Kind of about every other.
I think there's probably, I would say just having the responses that come back through, there'll probably be about 50% of the towns now are doing it. Some towns have bigger industry, give a revenue coming in and they don't. But very few small communities are not charging it. I know that Umatilla is charging it. Both the small towns over there, we implemented it in my fire job and that really changed the dynamics of the department because it also helped with the salaries so it wasn't so competitive that everybody was moving. Once they got trained, they wouldn't move on, you know, so it helped with their salaries. And it, it really did make a difference.
Those are definitely, you know, good concerns. I mean, I don't know how valid they are for here for the people moving on.
Right, they stay pretty good here.
Usually they understand. You know, I, it would really be nice to see for me as a study of other communities, similar to what we did with the lodging tax, to see what other side, other communities of our size are doing. Now, Ray brings up a point that I think it's just, we're gonna get hit crazy hard on this. I mean, you know, to, to tell people, okay, so we're now gonna up your bill, which was roughly, what, 50 bucks a month?
That's water and sewer together.
Right, and so water and sewer together at 50 bucks a month and now we're gonna add another 15. So we're essentially raising that fee by 30%.
I don't think, am I wrong? Is anybody for the 15?
No.
I don't think anybody's for the 15.
I'm in.
I'm thinking more of the 10.
But even that, it's 20% increase to a bill that, you know, I mean, there's probably a lot of people in the community, you know, 10 bucks may not seem like a lot, but what about the people who got, for some reason, the irrigation hook up as well? Is that one included in this? Maybe I missed that one.
Well, there's a way they can, they can ask to not, yeah, to not pay it. And it explains here how, the process, you have to go through.
Your 10 dollar fee should be for your period and you don't pay for every thing. Or do you? Do they pay separate water bills if they have irrigation? How many people in town have irrigation just yet?
It's the ones that are up.
In the district.
In the, yeah, in the suburban water district. And so they get charged five dollars a month for, that's just their usage, but they get charged for every bit of water they use.
But are they covered by our police department?
Well, coverage as it works in here when it overlaps, but they are strictly the sheriffs, if you want to get technical.
Yeah, I mean, they all go out of their own area if they need to or into this town or into the county, but technically it is.
And that sounded like it was gonna work a whole lot better, by the way, as a slight remark here, it sounds like that's gonna happen.
Well, yes, because they were, have been not able to go outside the city limits and respond to calls and that is going to change. Yeah, I don't want them 10 miles out unless it's a, you know, really bad situation, but yet if it's just over the border.
Well, the south end of town, I mean, best nights are there, you know, two days.
You know, and we can identify, we could, we could do it several different ways. We could do only the people of the town are charged that. But then on the other hand, you know, if you go right outside the town limits, you know, how does that, you know, but we can look at a lot of different things.
Well, what would, what would you charge, for instance, for Warner Creek?
If you go up there?
Yeah, I mean, I would think 10 bucks is.
10 bucks for prisoner.
They're all using showers.
You know, whatever you want.
Because right now, I don't think we can respond over there unless it's gone.
But I don't think they should be paying the same 10 that I'm paying on my little house.
And we could start at five, two of them and just do it more gradually too, because if we're looking at.
Or we're getting nothing.
Or we could do nothing.
And live with the.
Can you come back to, you know, I'd like to have more history here. I mean, we say we haven't had 24 hour coverage for a while now and I understand that, but, I mean, there was, there was certainly a point in which we had really less than that and no coverage. I mean, you know, there's, there's communities much smaller than ours that have no coverage. You know, Paisley is an example, that's obviously not a very good comparison, Apples and Rogers, but, but what I'm saying is, not really, not, I mean, he lives there, but. They don't, I mean, a lot of communities don't have full-time coverage and yet we have agreements in place with like the sheriff's department and, you know, state police to help out in situations like that. I just kind of bug, I don't know, the, the bug that, you know, we're, we're going to increase people's fees to solve a solution. I mean, always taxing people out of stuff is not always a solution. You know, I think there can be agreements made that, that serve everybody's benefit, which is, should be number one, public safety. And if we want to continue to raise fees to provide public safety, when there may be other options that we haven't fully looked at.
You think the county would be agreeable to that?
I don't, we already have an agreement with the county.
We have an agreement, if our people go out on a call and they need help, they'll come. It's not, oh, our guys are not on tonight, you have to do this. That's a whole different dynamic, I think.
But they are 24 hours, they are on, somebody in the community is here, state police.
State police don't work.
No, they're not.
24 hour, yeah, state police.
No, on county and state.
Which is really interesting to me then, because it's, it's like, so we'll have 24, but that's still not gonna cover the outlying areas then. I mean, and that's news to me, it's hard, not very well informed, but that's why it seems like there should be better partnerships amongst making everybody else pay for, you know, something that. If there's no coverage on state police and.
I think we've had good cooperation from the sheriff's office suspiciously since we've been short-handed here.
Well, they've helped us a lot.
And, and, but we can't just ask them to continue that indefinitely covering the town when, when that's not their general.
Not suggesting that that's what they, that we're saying, and I'm certainly not suggesting that, I'm just saying that. We, you know, I mean, I, I know, when I moved to this community seven years ago, we're paying way higher tax here than in most communities. Tax, just flat tax. Look at the assessed value, you look at our tax rate, it is higher than most other communities. And we're as a council saying, that's not good enough, we have to increase your fees more. That to me does not sit right, that's not what I got on this board to do, is just continue to raise fees, I mean, and add all these other taxes. I mean, you remember I luxuriated with the lodges tax and fought for that to stay lower. Now, there can be lots of good benefits to that and there will be more of this too, but at what level do, you know, when you want to continue to pay in and, and continue to have, you know, not taking responsibility for themselves and, and other types of agreements that could possibly be made that, that might solve a lot of these solutions rather than just throw more money at the system.
Maybe, maybe with your connections within the county, you could look into that for us because I, I thought we, it was wonderful when we got cooperation at this point with the county and with, you know, I thought that was wonderful. It is not a time-honored tradition to have a really good inter-agency, inter-county, city cooperation. It doesn't happen easily if at all. So if you think that works, I think you ought to come up with that, find out what the probabilities are of that.
Well, I've definitely had conversations, I've had with Robert, I've had with the sheriff, I've had with commissioners and I, you know, started, you know, discussing ideas and they're simply ideas at this point. I mean, this council has to decide what services we want to provide for the money that, that is allotted to the city under our current ordinances. And if it's not enough and if you're, this group wants to say it's not enough and we need to increase fees, I guess we're gonna have to all live with that. But from, from my point of view, I think that there are other options that need to seriously be looked at. And they could be, you know, obviously maybe way outside the box, maybe too far-fetched for us to even accept, but, you know, hard times don't just mean you just raise fees and fees and fees. I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's not how I was, you know, raised. I get back to conservative mind and think that we need to better spend the money that we've been given. I mean, we've got a water issue and yet we're gonna increase this. I mean, to me, like Ray said, I mean, we're gonna live with water issues and not solving the problem. That report that we were given from Daryl is extremely disturbing, thinking that we're barely using any of our wells. Most of the ones that we have exceed, so they're good for nothing ultimately, and we're not putting money into that. I mean, it just, it seems kind of backwards that we're, we're gonna go and raise here.
Well, I don't think we're saying we're not gonna put any money into that.
But we're gonna have to raise fees is what we're gonna say to do the water appropriately. We don't have money to, or we'd fix the problem already if we had money to fix the water problems.
Well, that's what, we're putting into the grants, they'll fix that problem, but we will never be sure what we're gonna get.
I think there, in my opinion, it's like two different issues as far as water versus public safety.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, we can look at different options, yes, we can do nothing, yes, we can do whatever, and yes, we can raise the water or not raise the water, because the things that we're doing right now should have been done a long time ago. And we should have been raising, you know, monthly, every year, like cola rates or whatever, so that our rates would have kept up with the need, the demand for our system. And they haven't been, you know, and that's gonna be something else. If we get a loan, which we're looking at US or the EQ loan or very low rate, yeah, probably a loan or maybe 81% or something.
You know, that, that's real important to get our, keep our fire rating because of our homeowners insurance, to keep it from going up.
Is there a way to put the fee in and split it to some degree between water improvements and public safety?
It might, might it, it might not, it could, I mean, it would have to be a totally different corporation, you know, that others need to handle that. Because we will have to be addressing that. And like I say, Darwin, we, the reason this came up was some of the discussions we had with our interim chief and you weren't having that meeting, I don't believe, but that was kind of where we started really talking about that. And so that's why it's on, just for discussion today, it's not something we have to, I mean, you know, if we want 24 hour coverage, because you see what cars are driving, you see, you know, they have, the police department definitely needs someone as far as what they drive, what they wear, and that's changing right now, just from having our interim chief down here say, you guys need to take pride in what you look like. So he ordered some new stuff, you know. But our, our budget for our police department is very low and it's just up to you guys. I mean, it's totally up to you guys if you want the 24 hour coverage or you don't, because we're not gonna do it with five.
The 10 dollar figure was kicked around and so just to say we went with a 10 dollar figure, that is roughly a new employee for the police department. And then another 70 or some thousand that we could use for training and other things.
Equipment and training.
We're at 53, is that the present water bill?
Forty-eight.
Water and sewer.
Forty-three, sixty.
Oh, forty-three, sixty.
Forty-three, sixty.
Yeah, water is 15 and we're the lowest in the state of Oregon.
And that's what I was gonna say when you compare it to, and then when you compare 60 miles to the south and yours is in the negative 70 something.
That's just water.
So, you know, you, you're not increasing that much in comparison to services that are offered by other communities. I do have a problem with including it in the water bill because I think that's where it crosses over and people will think, okay, so you're gonna go before police in this.
And I should have to prove this water? We could, it'll double.
It costs more to bill, I understand that, but I, I do think that we need to keep them separate because I, I have a problem with, and I'll just say it right now. I've, I've seen the people that have come and they're not the ones that are seeking Facebook coverage, they're not the ones that are seeking news coverage of our water problems. I still have yet to see a great water problem in our community. I know we have some discolored water, but I, I don't see it. I see people that go to Facebook, to social media to get their gigs, whatever. And I, I just, you know, if you can send me to a home that has that kind of water, I would like to see it, I really would. I, I would invite Jeff or somebody that has that kind of water, I'd like to go see it coming out of their faucets and then to inspect their water lines under their home to see what they've got going. I, I don't think we provide that bad of water and the cost we provide is certainly a hell of a burden, no matter what community, even if it's a little bit discolored. You know, it's not harmful to you, it might not look all that a piece of, but I, I just feel that as low as our water and sewer rates are in this community to, to bombard our water department as it has been by the social media and others, the news on TV and what have you, I don't think they took a better reading of it. And so maybe I'm misled, maybe I'm the counselor who is out in the black and doesn't know what's going on in our fire system, but after 10 years of being here, I just still don't see it. I, you know, I see the people that come, they, they haven't, you know, proven to me that they have that bad of water in their home. You know, I, maybe I am totally wrong, but.
Well, if we don't put it in the water bill, the collection is going to be long-winded, difficult.
Well, that's true, yeah.
And it is defined, you know, on utility bill, you know, public safety.
I was gonna say, it depends on how we set that bill up, I guess, it says, you know, this is your bill, this is your public safety part of it, here's your total.
Can I ask a question? What about the 911? How come we can't, and maybe this is wrong, we say up the tax on the 911 a little bit and then have the 911, since the police answered the 911, and have some of that go into a fund for the police officers?
I have no idea.
911 isn't making it that way.
Because 911 has enough problems.
Yeah, we may not see it for, after, I thought we were, did we were close to not having 911 funds from the state.
Well, we still have them right now, so we'll be thankful, but when that sort of change. You know, these are just ideas to think about, to not think about. It depends on what the people in the town want and you guys know that.
Well, either, either way we go with this, if the people are gonna say, if I'm gonna pay this, I want to see something for these services and, so, but, you know, if we could split it somehow, percentage goes towards our water, percentage goes towards the public safety. Take, take the 15 and split it.
And maybe that we split it like the 60-40 thing to start with, to be built up that fund and then can be switched as that fund gets a little better. But we have to be able to cover the salary and the expenses of a new officer if we're gonna try at least minimally to get the 24 hour coverage. And when we have our public meetings and we start, you know, but the pro, okay, the problem with the eight few people, one of them, is that nobody will complain until it's already been decided and the ordinance has been passed and people are getting that first bill and then they're gonna come unglued. So we have to make a real plea, if you don't want this, you better get here and let us know what, what you're willing to settle for.
And I personally think that even 10 dollars is high to do that initially. You know, if we did just make one officer position, you know, and be more, well, how we could be more conservative in the police department because it is a high demand for dollar department. But I, I would be a little hesitant in looking to go to 10 unless you were gonna do, like you say, the water. But until we get, when we get the water plan update done, we need to do a water rate step. And that's something that we can get a grant for and then if we get a loan. we get a loan or a grant, whoever the funding agency is, tells us our, our water needs to be, and how to get there at a certain time.
So we can make our payments.
Right. So, um, that's just the topic.
Now, if our water situation isn't as bad as really it could turn out to be, I guess from what everybody seems to think, then we could be looking at some phenomenal fees to get that in for them, and so, I'd like to, to guess work at that right now, like you say, we need to do some study first and find out if it makes a little.
We don't really, really know how we can improve at this point.
Yeah, we're grasping straws around the strands.
And right now, just some of the things they thought that we're doing now, that we weren't doing a year ago, or you're not, or whatever, is the one water we paid for and have, has been on our docket basically, that wasn't ever used. Okay, we're getting that up and running, so whatever kind of water is that gonna make a difference to our water? Our, our good well number eight was, you know, we weren't using it this winter, so we've updated, so that's gonna help with the lines, and then the more, uh, we flush the lines, then it gets the chemicals out of the inside of the pipes. So those things we've increased, and we're still working with a couple different things, uh, increasing the chlorine, of course, that's gonna cost more, but, you know, trying to do some improvements right now that we are doing, to try to make that water fit, you know, and like I say, the guy that complained was the one with the dead-end loop line. I mean, we cannot flush it out. Now, I believe he may have tapped into the new one, I think he said he did, which will make a difference, you know? But, you know, just being proactive with what we are doing compared to what we were doing, may make a big difference in the color and the, you know, of the, the water.
And set ourselves, uh, some goals in bringing in better, you know, cleaning up the wells, every wells, getting those to work at maximum efficiency, and put some time, effort, and money into bringing those wells up to a standard that we can live with.
Well, they really do, the casing that is in there needs to be cleaned every five years, and I don't, I think it's five, I'm not sure exactly on the timeframe, but it needs, and that should just be a maintenance thing that is ongoing, with, you know, you do one this year, you do the next one, so that they're continually clean also, you know, and I don't know, I have not asked Jeff about when we've done that, but, you know, they need to be, it's just continual maintenance that may not have been done in the past, and I can't say if it was or it wasn't, um, but just being proactive on making sure we're doing things to make sure the water's better, because we may not have to do a filtration system if you think about what they said, because they said that when the water comes out of the, the tanks-
Springs.
It's clear, but the chlorinate, once you get the chlorinate, chlor-
Turns the water.
Turns that water and collects that stuff to make it a different color. So, but it's in the lines more than it's in the-
Still alive, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, I mean, but until we get that plan done, we really, and then do it basically, we don't know what we need to do. And maybe we're fine.
And how long are we looking at to get there? Do we have any idea?
On how long to get the plan done, or how long to get-
To get the plan done and then sort of make decisions about, you know, what, what might work, what we need to pay for to get done.
We need to be wrapping up that water plan, they've been working on it since July, and that's, uh, pretty substantial time.
Yeah, I would like to, I, I think I've asked Daryl twice if we could get the program he gave us printed out.
Oh, I have it in my office, sorry, I'll make you a copy, I'll make you all a copy.
I mean, we just, I mean, we saw that, you know, and if we're gonna look at stuff and just like have it for review anyway, but, um, because that was, you know, a little fast than we did.
I will make sure you get a copy, because I just got that.
Because that, yeah, so we did get one over.
Yep.
But we still have other things to just continue. Maybe we know that this is one option.
Yeah.
And we have to set between five and 15, somewhere in there, if we're going to somehow raise the standards for our police services. There are other options, if we can form a closer alliance, so be it, but, uh, that has to come in, I think, so that we can decide on this. If we have to have rate increases for the water in order to meet our payments on something, well, that's what we'll have to do. You know, I mean, nobody wants higher bills, trust me, but on the other hand, I'm look, do we, do we all know what's going on over in Grant's Pass? Where they will not fund their law enforcement?
Well, they, yeah, they voted down that.
They voted it down two or three times.
Oh, more than that, yeah.
And so, they are virtually without any kind of city policeman. They have something with sheriffs, I think, but it's very, very slim coverage. So what happens, and at least according to a friend who lives there, what happens is all these people are creating a whole lot of theft and burglary and, and muggings and stuff like that, then they run back to Grant's Pass and hide in their little hovels. Well, you know, nobody wants to see our, our, uh, system go that bad, but we have, we have to do something, and, uh, I think people are pretty unaware of how much it, I mean, I'll tell you what surprised me when I got on the council. Looking at the amount of electricity and phone bills died. I had no idea it cost that much, and I think people are very unaware of what it costs to run a town, and so, you know, maybe we have to do a little education there.
Well, if you think about our budget the way it is right now, it's costing about $100,000 with all the equipment, cars and stuff for four months. If you think about the big, you know, because it's about $499 is our, 9,000 is our budget, so if you look at it that way, this is what it's gonna cost you basically to have an officer. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, because you'll be, another car, another, more gas, because we're gonna be patrolling more, and-
And we do have-
So, right, equipment for another officer.
We have several vehicles, I was not aware that ours was surplus out, and there's nine back there, I was not aware that there was nine that we surplus down, that it's just sitting there, and I don't know about it. So we can, you know, recoup some money on that at an auction or, you know, something like that, but, yeah, that's a lot.
Sell them to some of these places that use them for speed traps. Yeah, but it doesn't take people too long to figure out.
There's no officer sitting there.
It doesn't, it doesn't take too long for the people who live in that area to find out, but those of us who are traveling through Oak Ridge, you know? I have rarely been through there, but I haven't gotten a ticket in the past when I was still for them.
Well, there's a lesson to be learned.
Well, I did not, I wasn't speedy, I was, you know, one of the things was they had this, they had all this greenery over the speed, uh, the posted speed, and I was like, I didn't know when it dropped down to 25 this, you know, yeah, through town, but not back there on the other side of the bridge. Can you see it? He said, "Well, I know it's there." Anyway, I didn't really, anyway, I think, I think we need to be looking at it, but I think we need to, uh, look at possibilities, see if there's a way, I don't know, maybe splitting it if we have to, uh, convince people that we're on the track of doing something with the water that's going to improve, uh, the whole thing, and say, right now, this is a problem too.
It is, both have, both are problems, and both need to be somehow resolved in the next few years, I guess, but, um, well, we don't solve it by December 31st, I mean,
What, what if we, uh, I don't know, uh, figured out, you know, exactly where we're gonna go with this, maybe have like a town hall meeting, or some way to let the public know this, what, what we're looking at, what are your comments on it, and, you know, we might get a lot of people that say, "Hey, let's go for it."
I mean, we did have one lady that said she'd be willing to pay more for water, and I, I really think, Ray, that's a good idea, to get feedback, because, you know, that way, if they, if we say, people want 24-hour coverage, this is our problem with it, people want better water, this is our problem with paying for that, how much are you willing to help down do those things?
I, I think that's good for a number of different areas of, first of all, yeah, we do ask for, and we're likely to get some really good, uh, feedback. On the other hand, those people who didn't show up and want to complain afterwards, we can say, "Hey, we had all these meetings, you shouldn't have been here." And if we haven't had the meetings, you know, we have no way to stand on. I think we definitely have to have those, but we kind of need to, to assure what we're going to present.
Right. Yeah, and, and we need to know a little bit more about maybe what the water situation is, you know? Well, I guess some idea of what it's gonna cost us, we kind of know what, what it's gonna cost us for the top grade police department, but we don't have really any idea right now, but hopefully we will, soon.
And we don't know until, like I said, we get the study done, and then we do a rate study, um, to know what we need to do. I know that, and it depends on what we do, if we have to build a filtration system, that's all sort of, you know, 200 to 500, 600,000, or 1 million, I mean, 6 million, or 5 million, whatever, you, you don't know until we get that study done, to know exactly what we have to do, so.
You know, I'm, I'm like Mike on, on this water thing, I've talked to a lot of people, and they say their water's fine.
Well, my water's been very good this past year, I would say.
There are, except for the only time it's got a problem, of course, is when they flush the lines, and I know when that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Well, and we did increase it from two flushes a year to four flushes a year, I mean, we doubled that part.
That's made a difference, at least, my neighbor had.
I see them flushing the lines, when they're down up by my house and stuff, I go and turn the water on and let it run, and by the next day, it's clear.
And that's why it's clear then.
Couple hours, you know? We thought this time that we'd let people know to let their faucets be open and would give them a break, so that we can flush everybody, you know, flush it in and out of their, you know, so.
You know, I, well, we need to, you know, figure out what we wanna do, and then let's come up with a, a date and time as to hold the, what we comment there is, and, and see what people, me, if I was gonna do both of them, I'd just go ahead and do the $15, and put so much towards water and so much towards the police department, and, you know, if people, if they understand-
They're getting my basis cut.
I don't think, I don't think they would complain as bad, because they're seeing that we're putting towards both areas to try to improve both of them.
Let's split it somehow. So have we left you enough confusing discussions?
No, I got it. I got it, I think I've got everybody's little comments that I can come back with.
Do we have to discuss something else?
No.
Your, your comment about complaints regarding dispatch? Did I, I don't know that anybody came in, I told Will Cady, Cady would come in and talk to you or to somebody, but the school had a, it had a situation. Emma called the dispatch and said, "We need to have an officer down here now." And the guy starts, he's partly got a list in front of him, like, you know, like a teleprompter, you know, guys, "Well, who is involved with this, you know, what did that, and what, you know," and she's gonna, "Send the officer now."
And what she didn't know is once he said, because I listened to the tape, and it's, I mean, he could've done a better job, yes. He, when she said he needed an officer, he went off and said, "We need an officer." She couldn't hear that an officer was in route. The officers were saying to the dispatcher, "Okay, where are we going?" So he asked them, you know, "What part of the high school are we going to to?" So he had to ask that.
So his first remark should've said, "I've got an officer," and he heard, "But he's so general information."
Yes, because then he said-
That's another training issue.
What is he wearing? You know, which direction did he go? Those were things that the officer was asking the dispatcher, the dispatcher was asking Emma, and she said, "I'm not giving you the name of the person." Now, if it's in a violent situation, which it was, because I listened to the background, she should've said, "It's such and such," so they know who they're looking for, because they didn't know, they don't, you know, but she was just more for being, I mean, it's a frantic situation when you have somebody threatening, you know, and, and it was, and he was yelling in the background, you could hear him yelling at his Cady. So, uh, it was, it could've been handled better on our side, could've been handled better on their side, and I don't think we should take that whole-
No, I don't think so either, but I, I just, I thought, you know, how can you train these people to, you know, here's the lady that calls every Friday night when the traffic's too fast in front of her house, and she wants the cops to come arrest everybody.
That's what?
And she calls all the time with a complaint, and you have the school that says, "Uh, no."
So actually, he did get that person rolling, and he was talking to our officers, and they were asking a question for him to ask her.
Well, you walk into a school, you better know which kid you're gonna go to-
And where to go to, you know, I mean, those are, those are critical, and that's tonight at the meeting, you know, I think it's critical that we know, because everybody could've done a better job. But it was being asked by the officer in route to the incident.
Is there a chance we could somehow get parties involved and say, "Okay, this is what happens at our end, your end, this is what we have to do to bring it together in the future?"
And I do know that, um, Chief Rattle went down and talked to Will, and so I think there's a better understanding, uh, possibly, and I was hoping that he could be here tonight to kind of be able to explain some of those a little bit better, but I did listen, and I re-listened even this week to make sure that we weren't missing something. But there was three parts, three things going on at that time, so, and I think tonight at that meeting, it should open up, you know, we need to be able to know what to do in a situation like that, from the school employee side to police dispatch, or whatever it is, yeah.
I don't know, maybe, darling, you know, what the protocol is, allowing, you know, to tell what the kid's name is that's causing the problem, I don't know if they have some kind of a-
There's a whole lot of protocol in there, there's, I mean, uh, there's all kinds of things going on in the school that nobody knows why, and nobody can talk. We've been in that same position, we decide as a, as an organization, someone has to be let go, or they're gonna, you know, fire him, and then people are coming out of the work, because that person can say anything he wants to about us to everybody. We can't say anything, and that's the school's position too, you know? So they named this kid, and it was really somebody else's fault, and you did this kid's name out there, and now, you know, a year from now, he goes and gets a job, and somebody says, "Oh, you're that kid who did this," I mean, it just snowballs on you.
So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that we don't know from the school side, I mean, we don't know, although you're in the administration at school, so.
Do you have anything else? It was a German work session at, uh, 3:55, take five minutes.